Good evening and welcome to the regular city council meeting for Monday, May 14th, 2018. At this time, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And Mayor Vieira.
Here. Next, we'll move to the invocation by Chris Griksen from the Valley Christian Center, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I do not see Pastor Griksen in the audience, Mayor.
Dave, is it, or is he coming?
He just walked in.
Just walked in? All right, great.
God in heaven, thank you for this day, Lord God. I pray that you would just minister to each one here, Lord God. I pray for peace. I pray for our city council. I pray that we would glorify you in all that we do. I thank you for the time to come together, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have one presentation this evening. Proclamation declaring the week of May 13th, 2018, as National Police Week, and May 15th, 2018, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the City of Series. I do have a proclamation here, and I'll go ahead and read. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas the members of the Law Enforcement Agency of Series play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the City of Series, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of Law Enforcement Agency of Series unceasingly provide a vital public service, now therefore, I, Chris Vieira, Mayor of the City of Series, call upon all citizens of Series and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 13th as National Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may build themselves an inevitable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Series to observe May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes proclaimed this 14th day of May, 2018.
So, Council, I just want to say thanks for the support that you've given us in the Police Department over the years. We really appreciate it. As we remember the fallen from last year, there were 93 police officers or law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty in the United States, six here in California, one right here in Stanislaus County. That's Deputy Jason Garner. So, thank you for your support.
You. Okay, next, we will move to citizens' communication to the council on matters not included on the agenda. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, I'll start with the speaker cards. I do have one with Sheila Brandt.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. On behalf of the Series Street Fair Parade Committee, I would like to thank the Series City Council and Mayor for allowing the parade to happen this year. It is such a wonderful way to showcase our community. There were about 70 parade entries, 60 volunteers, and four times more spectators this year than previous years. We believe that the news is getting out about the parade and how this is a family-friendly, fun way to kick off the Series Street Fair weekend. With this being the Centennial Year for Series and the 30th year of the Series Street Fair, there was added excitement for both events. Once again, we thank you.
At this time, is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council on a non-agend item?
Dave Pratt at Series. Yeah, it was a good street fair this year. The weather was pretty nice, and it looked like Saturday was a better day than Sunday. But it's looked like a lot of people, there was a lot more garbage in the streets. Apparently, a lot of people missed the garbage cans. One only thing is, you know, we got two booths, but unfortunately, they spread ours out, and it'd been nice if we could've had both ours together instead of separated about 40 feet. But otherwise, we had a pretty good groups of people come by both our booths, and there was a lot of people were interested in us tearing down our weapons and putting them back together and putting them on display. Unfortunately, we also had quite a few knock them down, too, because they weren't paying attention where they were walking around there. But it was still good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leonard Shepherd. I gotta tell you, I didn't go to the street fair. I've been to so many big places, like the Highland Games and stuff. I'm tired of crowds. I feel like somebody's always looking over my shoulder or something. So, I didn't go to the street fair or the parade. But I gotta tell you, I'm starting to feel like an old car. You get one thing fixed on an old car, and something else breaks down. So, even though I had my knee fixed and I could walk pretty good, walking a long ways just still isn't in the cards. So, I didn't want anything else to happen to the old car. But I'm glad it went well. I haven't been to one in quite a while. When I first came to Series, I think they had something called a Western Arts Festival, too. I went to that a couple of times, and I really liked that because it showcased artists from the area and stuff, so. But these vendors don't do anything for me anymore, so I didn't come to the street fair. And I'll be very honest about it. I don't like big crowds anymore. I like small crowds, like 10 people, maybe. But I'm not just into big crowds anymore. But I'm glad that it went over well. And those who like it, I'm glad you went, and I'm glad you had a good time. But it's just not my thing anymore. But I have to agree with Mr. Pratt, and it doesn't make any difference what function you're at. People are slobs. They'll walk right by a garbage can and throw stuff on the ground. I saw that in, of all places, New York City, where a lady dressed in a fur coat with a fur hat on, and she's walking there eating something, walks right to a garbage can and throws it on the ground. And I said something to her. She says, "They pay people to pick the stuff up." I went on down the street. With an attitude like that, oh, man. It just can't, I can't believe it. I see people walk across the parking lot, eating something. I mean, they got it in their hand, so they have the wrapping left over. They go and get in their car, they throw it on the ground. What's the matter with people? Well, if I could figure that out, I'd be a billionaire, you know, because I don't understand what people are thinking. But I do gotta tell you, unlike Fourth Street Series sign on the north end, it really looks good. I have one comment. Cut the background lighting, those little lights along the bottom, and it'll stand out even more. I see it. I go down there at night just to make sure I'm right, and yep. And the other end, could use the same thing. Then you could really tell that you were on Fourth Street in Series. But other than that, it's great to be alive. It's great to be almost 75. And I don't have my neck in a brace like Ken. Hey, are you awake? I just still, even though he's got his neck in a brace, he's got one of the nicest-looking houses on Muffin.
Thank you, Shepherd.
I look at that, and I say, "See, everybody could do that. Everybody's house could look good if they just take the time." Now, I don't know where Mike lives, and I don't know where you live, Linda, Brett, Mayor, but I'll bet you there's not a one of you up there that's house is not great-looking. And if you want to prove me wrong, tell me where you live. I'll come by and look. I think that maybe the people of Series need to take a lesson from the city council. Keep your house up. Keep your yard clean. Don't throw stuff on the ground. But that's gonna fall on deaf ears outside of this room, I can tell you. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak to the council on a non-agend item?
Good evening. My name is Eric Alvarez. I'm a field representative for Congressman Denham. Y'all may be familiar with my counterpart, Eddie Mendoza. He is no longer in ties with Series. Him and I will both be going at this together, but for the most part, you'll see more of my face as the months unfold. At any rate, I figured I'd introduce myself. I've been acquainted with a couple of you all, not everybody, but I am born in Modesto, raised in Series, graduate of Central Valley. Went out to state for college, decided to come back, and now I'm here in this capacity. But I do enjoy my work with Congressman Denham, and I do enjoy meeting all of our elected officials, all of our constituents, and everybody in the district. So far, has treated me with the respect that I would imagine my community would treat me with. So, at any rate, I do not have a legislative update for you all this evening, but I do have a couple of things that Congressman Denham does provide to his constituents. So, at denim.house.gov, you will find a host of information and links to an array of constituent services. Those services include or not limited to help with a federal agency, veteran services, parents and students' support and resources, senior citizens' resources, internships, flag requests, tour requests, among others. But I will be here for the remainder of the meeting, and I hope to get acquainted with you all on a personal note. And I would provide my business cards to the council and members of the audience. But Mayor Vieira, esteemed members of the council and members of the audience, thank you for being in attendance, and that's all I have for you all this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rhino?
Mr. Alvarez, when Eddie is no longer taking care of Series, did he bring you up to date on the landscaping at our post office?
He has. I have something for you, an update for you.
Would the update be that it's gonna be taken care of?
It's a little bit more complex than that. But I will be happy to answer your questions at a later time after the meeting, perhaps. I do have an update. I didn't memorize it. It is in my binder, so, in that regard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to the council on a non-agend item? Okay. With that, we will move on to consent calendar, or, excuse me, we'll move on to appointments to boards and commissions. We have none this evening. Conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the consent calendar items or public hearing items? Hearing none, we will move to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, a recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. At this time, is there anyone on the council, excuse me, that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion?
Seven and 14.
Okay, at this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like an item on the consent calendar pulled for further discussion other than items seven and 14? Okay. Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for direction on the other items.
Move for approval of one through six, eight through 13.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes, but I'd like to abstain on item number three.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Vieira.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0, except for item three. It's 4-0-1. Absention.
Okay. Item number seven, resolution number 2018-041, amending the current agreement with Series Unified School District to add a fourth school resource officer. Councilmember Rhino?
I just have a couple of questions. Will the fourth SRO be an existing employee?
Yes, but we will be hiring another police officer to fill that position.
Because that was my next question. When that person moved over to the school district, what would that impact be on our street officers? So, it'll be how long before we have a new officer to cover that person?
Gotcha. So, we're trying to plan ahead for that because we're supposed to fill that position, and we'll be filling it if you approve it, in August, the beginning of school year next year. So, we have enough time, hopefully, to hire that person and train them, get them out on the street before we choose the other person to go to school.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. Currently, how many officers are we down or short to get your department's staff to where it is a reasonable amount?
Well, I have two vacancies currently. One of them, the council approved, to be filled as an over hire for someone injured on duty, and we're still working on that. The ad, we advertised it last week, so we'll be closing that, I think, by the end of this week, and then testing.
So, your projection is to hire three officers with this next hiring?
Yes, it could get that.
Two for your vacancies, one for the SRO?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Any questions in the audience? Okay, I'll bring it back to direction on this item.
Move to adopt resolution 2018-041.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Vieira.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Item number 14, resolution number 2018-048, approving list of projects to be funded with the Senate Bill SB1, quote, "The Road Repair and Accounting Act of 2017," and incorporate the list of projects to appropriate revenue and expenditures in the fiscal year 2017-2018. Budget, excuse me. Councilmember Rhino?
I just have a concern about the roundabouts, and that typically, they, to me, they seem like they create more of a traffic problem than what you're trying to fix. I mean, if you're up in Modesto, where they have a lot of them, all of a sudden, you're in, you're going around, and somebody pulls in, and they don't know where the heck they're going. So, my question is, is there not another alternative, especially over at Central and Pine? Because if you're also gonna do a roundabout, how is that going to impact the traffic coming out of and going in? Traffic going out of and into that shopping center?
Those are good questions, and from the day that roundabouts appeared in the Central Valley, that same question has come about, about how do they actually get in and out of those roundabouts? There's been issues that I believe, over time, that people have learned how to manipulate the roundabouts and get in and out of them in an easy fashion, in a safe fashion. On these two particular items, they're originally approved in 2014-15 budget, and we've been putting monies together along the last few years until we get enough to actually fund the project. The original funding source is CMAC funding, which is based on a lot of clean air issues and what have you with the roundabouts. They definitely provide better air quality than a standard traffic signal or stop signs as far as admissions goes. We were underfunded on this project until this last year. We were able to find the SB1 funding and additional CMAC funding through our StandCog due to the fact that our performance over the last eight years has been exemplary amongst all the other cities in our area. So, the monies that were available now, extra $500,000, will be coming our way to complete the funding on this project. So, but the design does complement the entry and exits for that shopping center you're talking about. We've spoken with those folks, and they seem confident that this improvement will be good for their business, and with such the terrible congestion they have at Pine and Central especially, all the folks that we spoke to are happy that it's coming finally.
Does it impact the business that's right on the corner?
Absolutely. It impacts all the businesses, but they're all in agreement that this will be an improvement for what they have now.
And there's no other alternative besides a roundabout?
It would be an expensive traffic signal, but if you can see the diagrams I showed you earlier, there's five intersections, or there's five entry points at that intersection. So, a five-legged traffic signal is a very complicated situation. Where a roundabout, we can actually blend those movements together. We believe this is the safest option that there is out there.
And you said it's a one-lane roundabout or two?
It is a one lane. It's not the dual like you've seen in Modesto that some people have a problem with.
Okay, thank you.
So, as I look at this map, the traffic coming on Industrial Way heading westbound, the only way they're gonna be able to turn is turn to the right, basically, and go northbound?
That is correct. You need to follow the circle in the same.
So, they gotta go all the way around the circle just to head south?
That is correct.
Okay. And the people that are going south, and they want to turn, they turn to go east on Industrial Way, they can do that? But there's no, doesn't appear to be any type of turn lane or anything there, so you're gonna back up traffic into the roundabout?
No, there will be no backup in the roundabout, Mr. Klein. There's access for every direction out of that.
Well, yeah, but if you're going, if you're gonna go south on Central, and you want to turn, turn into Industrial Way, and there's cars there that are, you know, like when the high school gets out, and they're going, and they're heading towards the roundabout, heading north on Central, and you got people that are heading south on Central that want to turn on Industrial, and those cars are backed up right here.
They won't back up, though. I think they're just gonna turn right there.
No, but if you're, what I'm saying is, if you're going down Central South, and you want to turn, turn to go east on Industrial.
Well, you're gonna come around your circle like that.
Yeah, but then you got cars going this way, if you look at it.
Right, but these cars.
Those are traditional yield movements that would be a company.
See, he's one of the people that doesn't know how to use them as he does.
He doesn't.
These people have to yield for the person that's in the roundabout.
Come out of the roundabout, you go here, and you turn here. These guys are going this way. This is not a roundabout. That is the extension on a roundabout. So, you come out of this roundabout, and you want to turn that way. How are they gonna yield because this is straight away?
Oh, I see what you're saying, because this is the roundabout here.
Correct. So, you don't know how to read the map.
The intent, Mr. Klein, is to keep everybody moving within the roundabout but yielding before they enter.
But the Industrial Way is south of the roundabout, and there's a little island between Pine Street and Industrial. And like I say, if the traffic flow going after the high school, and I'm gonna show our resident engineer, this is what I'm talking about right here, to turn in here with the cars coming this way. And if you're at the high school, and it's at its peak, and people are leaving, then you're gonna back up. These are gonna go here, and these guys are gonna be stopped, and it's gonna back up all the way around.
There is a signal at Don Pedro, which also creates some gaps in the traffic as well, so.
I would assume since OmniMeans is on here that they traffic modeled it.
They are clearly considered the experts in California in terms of roundabout design, and this is not an easy roundabout, but this is one that they are confident, that they're very proud of how this will operate and significantly improve the level of operation that we currently experience out there. Anybody who's driven that recognizes that area can be a difficult.
I've never seen a backup on Industrial, actually. It's always coming off of.
Pine and Central are the challenges, correct.
Pine and Central, it's always there.
Correct.
Right. So, is there another form, way we can study this thing?
I think it's already been studied.
It's been studied. This design costs well over $200,000. This is a very expensive project, and a, of all the options, this is the far superior option. The traffic signal was impossible to operate.
And so, when the school is going in session, and the school gets out 10 months out of the year, and that backs up right there, because Councilmember Rhino sees what I'm talking about. I showed the mayor where it's at, and if he gets backed up, well, if it gets backed up, it's getting backed up now, right?
So.
So, okay.
The roundabout's supposed to help with the flow of traffic, correct?
Correct. And safety.
And what's the speed limit in that particular roundabout? 15 miles an hour?
15 to 20 miles an hour.
15, 20 miles an hour. I think it works just fine.
With all due respect to my fair and peer friends over here, OmniMeans is pretty respected in the industry, so if they believe that that will work, I trust that it will. So, any other questions? Nope. This time, is anyone in the audience, have any comments on this item?
Dave Pratt at Series. I know that the traffic going south on that is kind of like a blind area. I know when we go from our post that way to the high school and stuff, you gotta be careful. You did a car survey on traffic in that area?
Yes. Traffic counts, and all of the volumes, we're studying in every direction thoroughly.
Very high?
Very high. Very low volumes on Industrial, high volumes on Central and Pine Street.
Yeah, all right.
You guys are sissies. You ever been to England, Scotland, Ireland, where they've got roundabouts that are eight lanes, and they have a big zero area in the middle? That's for people who can't get their way out, go park for a half hour.
And we have fond memories in Scotland of what somebody thought of my driving. That's all I have.
Well, that's why I don't drive there. I have somebody who knows how to drive their drive, because the worst drivers in the world are Americans in England and Scotland and Ireland. They're the worst, I can tell you. Holland, they drive just like we do. Same side of the road, the cars are just like ours. I don't mind driving in Holland, but not in Scotland, Ireland. But you know one of the things that I've noticed about the roundabouts here in the U.S.? And I've gone around a lot of them, and that's, they don't have an island full of crap in the middle. It's all flat. That way, if something happens, a person can pull off into that flat area till the traffic goes away. It doesn't have to look, they don't want it to look beautiful, they just want it to function. And they function, but Linda, I wouldn't drive over there either. That would just scare the daylights out of me.
I don't think my husband will let me drive again.
Maybe that's a good thing, you know? If you go back over there, hire some teenager with a car to take you around, because they can go around those roundabouts. And I just was amazed at the traffic, how it flowed. There were 40 cars in that roundabout, I think, at one time, and nobody was honking their horn or cussing or anything else. They just maneuvered the way, but it's knowing what you're doing. I've seen some of the roundabouts in Modesto. I've seen some of the roundabouts in Modesto, the double lanes, they're dangerous, because there's so many people that don't know how to drive a roundabout, driving in them. So, if you only have one lane, you know, and you know what you're doing, roundabouts are great. I've had people say to me, "Why did they take out the roundabouts downtown? They were the greatest thing. You could just drive downtown, get around where you wanted to go, and go." I felt the same way. Hey, I have no problem with a roundabout. I've gone roundabouts in St. Louis, Missouri, and Louisville, Kentucky, and a few other places. And if you know and you're not afraid that you're gonna make a mistake, that's when you make a mistake. It's when you're afraid you're gonna make a mistake, you'll do it. So, just take your time and learn how to drive in a roundabout. I think they're great, Darryl. I love them. And I don't care how much, how great they are, there's gonna be some idiot, Mike, that's gonna cause the traffic, Jim, because they don't know how to drive.
And Mr. Shepherd, if I may make a comment? I agree with what you're saying, but if you look at the map, there's three streets that lead into the, into the roundabout. The fourth street in question is approximately, let's say, 50 yards down the street that doesn't bleed into the roundabout? Okay? So, instead of having four streets bleed into it, there's three streets that bleed in, or a north and south on Central. You have the, the west, west and eastbound like Pine Street, there is a, a strip mall right there, but if you go a little bit south of Pine Street, there is a street called Industrial that does not bleed into the roundabout. It is approximately 50 yards or so to the south. So, that traffic right there can only turn one way to get into the roundabout, and then they have to go all the way around the loop to go southbound on Central, okay? And if you want to go southbound on Central and turn onto Industrial to go west, excuse me, to go east, you have to wait for the other cars to go by. So, that is why I'm saying the discrepancy, is because there's not four streets that bleed into the roundabout. There's a fourth street that has to bleed onto Central Avenue first, first, before it gets to the roundabout.
Roundabouts are called roundabouts because you go around them.
Correct.
If you need to go around, and I, there are roundabouts in Modesto where if you want to go in one, one direction, you gotta go all the way around from the direction you're going and go back.
That's not what you're talking about.
Simple.
And I'll keep this map, and I'll show you what I'm talking about later. Okay?
Okay. And if, if you only have one out of 100 that's a pit, you're doing, you're batting real good. So, I'm, I'm just saying, my experience in driving roundabouts is that they're not that complicated once you learn how to do them, but people are afraid of it, because there's no stop sign. People aren't stopping. I've seen people stop and look and wait until another car passed, and by that time, there's a backup when you, trust me. Go over on McHenry at the River, going into San Joaquin County, that roundabout, they're taking it out, and there's a lot of people hating it, because that roundabout is so smooth. You just, you're coming River Road and want to go on McHenry? You coming, as soon as there's a brake, you're gone. And you get your foot on the gas and get out of the way, because somebody else is coming behind you.
Mr. Shepherd, could I have you kind of finish up?
Oh.
Comments?
All right. Anyway, roundabouts are great. Thanks, Darryl.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else would like to speak on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for direction.
Can I, can I ask a question first of the attorney? You know, I, I do like incorporating the list of the projects for approval, but can I, can I approve the projects as they are, but oppose, like, let's say, the Pine Street, let it be known that I oppose the Pine Street without having to?
Vote no on?
Vote no on all of them?
Yeah, you could note that for the record.
Okay. So, with that, since I want to oppose the Pine Street roundabout, I do not want to make a motion, because then it would, would, you know, how would you say it, influence or, or make the rest of the council?
I'd move for approval of Resolution 2018-048.
Second?
Can we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes, with the, with opposing the roundabout at Pine, Pine and Central?
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes, opposing Pine and Central roundabout.
And Mayor Viera?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0 with the Vice Mayor Klein opposing Pine Street and Councilmember Rhino opposing Pine Street and Central.
Okay, thanks. We will move from the consent counter. We have no unfinished business this evening. Public hearing, we have one item, actually, two items. First, public hearing for ordinance number 2018-1045, amendment to cannabis ordinance 2017-1039 and 2017-1043, zoning ordinance text amendment of section 18.04.002 of the Series Municipal Code relating to adult-use cannabis. Before I go to the next one, Tom, is this, we can, do we do these all separately?
No, we could, we're gonna do them all together tonight, if that's your preference. We can do them all together, if that's your preference.
Okay. And then, item B, ordinance number 2018-1046, approving the first amended development agreement by and between the City of Series, JMR Management Group, LLP, and Case Manufacturing. Item C, ordinance number 2018-1047, approving the first amended development agreement by and between the City of Series, Guaranteed Holdings of California, Inc., and PACF, excuse me, PACAFI Cooperative, Inc. And item D, ordinance number 2018-1048, approving the first amended development agreement by and between the City of Series and Case Journey. And item E, complete the development agreement annual review for Case Manufacturing.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that was a mouthful, quite an agenda item and quite a stack of paper for your review. So, as we review this item, we'll take just a quick journey back to the council on our journey to cannabis here in the City of Series. So, as you recall, May of 2017, the council approved development agreement with Case Manufacturing to allow for a medical cannabis manufacturing facility, which included a small cultivation. Subsequent to that discussion, there was also two dispensaries that were approved in November with Pacify, and then in January with Case Journey. Those three facilities are now operating, and during the course of that process of adopting those development agreements, there were a few things that were still uncertain, and one of those was how the state regulations were going to impact how these facilities operated. So, emergency regulations were adopted by the State of California late last year, which impacted how the businesses are operating. And as the council recalls, in January, we had a discussion, what we would like to do with kind of the next phase of cannabis operations, and one of those items was the consideration of the difference between the two markets that were created, between the medicinal and the adult use. And with the emergency regulations the state adopted, they, in essence, eliminated the difference from a regulatory standpoint between those two items, hence moving us towards, in essence, almost a single opportunity for the way these two original markets were supposed to operate. So, council did approve a side letter in February to allow for the three development agreements to sell adult use. So, the agreements that are being presented tonight and the ordinances that impact them, or really enact them, sorry, are ratifying and clarifying what this council approved back in February. So, the first piece is the ordinance, which updates the previous pilot program that we adopted back in May, to allow for the change from medicinal to medicinal and adult use. The second part of that is a zoning ordinance text amendment, which amends the zoning code to reference both pieces, that would be adult use and the medicinal. And then, there's an ordinance for each of the three entities that we have business with, the Case Manufacturing, Pacify, and then Case Journey. So, each of those has their separate development agreement. The other piece that we added into those, based on the state law changes, was the distribution license. So, currently, the way distribution happens, you have to make a decision when you're labeling the product, really at the manufacturing stage, whether you're putting an M or an A on that. So, in order to make the determination where that product's going to end up, they need to make that decision at the local level, and they need that distribution license to be able to do that. So, we are adding, recommending to add the distribution license for all three of those entities as well, to ensure that, you know, as we've referenced, our partners in this conversation continue to have the tools they need to be successful in their business, as we've referenced from, from day one. When they're successful, then we're successful, and we've seen that so far. So, we do feel that those are some minimal changes, again, reactions to what the state has done at the state level with those changes. The final regs are still pending, they haven't finalized those yet, but we do feel that these are, these changes are necessary to continue to, for those operators to be successful in their business. The last piece of that is the annual development agreement review for Case Manufacturing. So, as they're getting near their one-year anniversary of the approval of that development agreement, the development agreement requires us to review how that performance has occurred over the past year, and so we're happy to report that the operator, Case Manufacturing, has held up their end of the bargain outstanding. Payments have been made timely, all of their operations are clean, they are open to the public when necessary, and our staff, whenever we ask, they've conducted tours for our police department, our fire department, and they are definitely a model corporate citizen for us, and we're very pleased that they have chosen to be here, and they're someone that we continue to look forward to doing business with. So, there's no, that's part of this overall process, is just completing that annual review. If the council has any questions, but from a staff perspective, we recommend that review be completed, and it's basically just a finding of sufficiency, that they've met the terms of the agreement for the first year, and then we would review that in the next year as well. So, with that, I'm open to any questions you may have on that overview of the long list of items.
Okay, are there any questions of staff? Okay, so, not all, this time I'll open up to the audience. Is there anyone that would like to ask a question or comment?
Good evening, Board. Mike Reynolds here, Case's dad, and it's hard to believe it's been a year since you guys sang "Happy Birthday" to him for his fourth birthday. You know, I can't tell you how appreciative I am for the opportunity to make my son's medicine here. A link I'll try to get out to you guys, CBS KPIX in San Francisco just did a story, doing a two-part story on us called "The Modesto Miracle." Gives you a little bit of insight to the families that we're helping all over California and different pieces like that. So, in addition to that, we've, you know, tried as best we can to work with hospitals. We have doctors from Stanford, UCSF sending us patients to Series, and there is a FDA study that just got fast-tracked for CBD to be prescribed legally, and that is supposed to go through in July. So, you know, I thank you guys for the opportunity to demonstrate what we can do in an environment that, or in a, a area of uncertainty that you guys have trusted in us, and I hope that we continue to show that we can be a positive contributor to the City of Series. And, you know, I continue to hope that, as we go down the line, that you'll look back and say, "This was a good opportunity for us." Not so much for revenue, but because of what we're really doing on a, on a medical stance. I know we play in both markets, just the way that California has rolled it out, we didn't know a year ago where we'd be with regulation. We still don't have a lot of certainty. You know, the black market is thriving right now because of high taxes, and it, you know, I wouldn't say anything has been easy. I look at Scott Segal right there, and I kinda wish I was still a teacher, because that was way easier and a lot more rewarding, and I could look people in the eye and tell them I had a reputable, reputable career teaching. And I still think I do, it's just convincing people what we're doing is decent. And so, with that, I want to tell you guys, thank you. The one thing I have been talking with Toby is, the manufacturing side, no problems, we've been doing great on, is the dispensary side, just adjusting the floor, that we don't price ourselves out of the taxes, because the black market is really thriving, and we just want to make sure that we have a fair play in the tax market. So, I just want to make sure we look at that and figure out the tax structure on the dispensary side. You know, we definitely want to contribute, a lot of, a lot of states or cities are going closer to 8%, and depends on what the floor is. We have such a range here in Series that that one's a little bit tough sometimes, as we're definitely starting. So, one thing, you know, we talked about is over the next six months, trying to be flexible on that as we're going, you know, growing clientele, and every dispensary's a little bit different. Their focus is different. Ours is definitely focused on trying to offer, you know, as, as much medical as possible, and every, you know, everybody's entitled to their opinion, and they, they think it's a farce and different things like that. For me, I've lived it, and so, that's the one thing I ask, that we just, you know, be able to work together. I've enjoyed every minute of working with the city. I am proud that I grew up here, I taught here, and I get, get to come back here and make cases medicine in other people's. But, I would definitely encourage you guys to look at the Modesto Miracle from KPIX, and just give you a little bit of insight of the people that we're working with, and it's not just people on the street that are wanting cannabis. So, but for me, I just want to tell you guys, thank you. I can't believe it's been a year, and I invite all of you, some of you have been out of the fire department, the police department, I invite any of you guys out anytime. We always have open doors from, you know, congressmen to our local sheriffs and you guys as well. So, we'd love for you guys to come out and see what we do, and just give you a better understanding of how and what we're doing to be different. So, thank you, guys.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions while I'm up here?
Are there any questions? Nope.
Thank you, guys. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion or direction.
I have a, I'd like to make a comment. You know, first off, I want to thank staff for everything they've done as far as putting this together and bringing this before us. You know, it was, it was a, it was a really blind thing for the City of Series to undertake and do anything by allowing Case Manufacturing to start up here in Series, and they've been a great partner with the city. They've been up front, I've, I've toured the facility, you know, Mr. Reynolds has been, been a fantastic client or, you know, business for the City of Series. You know, back in February, back in January, we, we approved the second medical municipal, you know, cannabis shop, which was the Case's Journey. And at that time, you know, I'd sort of asked that, you know, the city put a break, put a little brakes on it to see where we stand, how, what the, what the effects would be with our, our, our public safety and everything like that. And really, to date, I don't know of anything that has stopped it or, or, or had any issues with it, you know, but I'm wrestling with, you know, approving, you know, one through, one through four, for the simple reason is that I was not around when they, I was, I missed the meeting when they, when they allowed the adult use. And we haven't had any, any issues, but yet I haven't had a chance to sit down with the police department or the fire department and ask them what their concerns are, what we can do to help alleviate things. You know, pretty much, this is a pilot program for Stanislaus County. My understanding, and Supervisor DiMartini, please correct me, but, you know, you guys are doing the same kind of undertaking. I believe Oakdale and Water, Oakdale and Riverbank are trying to do the same thing, but they don't have anything up yet and running. So, you know, for the City of Series and, and the staff and working with them have done a fantastic job. But, you know, I personally would have liked a little bit more of a study and a little bit more of a conversation when it came to adult use, and that's just my personal belief. So, you know, with that being said, I can support item number five with the conduct of, the, to conduct a development agreement annual review, but the other four, I'm sorry, but I, I can't support.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yes. Originally, when Mr. Reynolds approached us about Case's Journey, it was really eye-opening. I had no, no idea that children suffered that much, and that what he was manufacturing could help them, so of course, I was supportive of it. And then, we had another medical dispensary that opened up on Angie, and I thought, okay, that, I mean, an actual medical dispensary, and I thought, that's good, it's, it's medicinal, and from what he showed us, there's obvious other people who need the product, so I was okay with that. But then, we start talking about adult use, and I said it before and I'll continue to say it, I do not want to see adult-use dispensaries in city. And maybe we haven't had any problems yet, but... And maybe we haven't had any problems yet, but I just unfortunately think we're going to, and I can't support adult-use dispensaries.
I think it's just been one of those things, and I appreciate, Mike, the conversations we had a couple of years ago in regards to the beginning of this process. And, you know, the tax base that we're getting is incredible. You know, this is the first time, I believe, that we're going to have a budget that we're in the positive, and it's because of marijuana use, it's because of medical, and it's because of adult use. If it's not being sold here, they could go on the other side of Modesto, four miles away, and if that adult person wanted to get it. And, you know, and I get what the other council members are saying, but, you know, I think that this is one of those opportunities, and again, I think we've taken it, we've ran with it, and, you know, I think it's going to be very good for a city. If you look at a lot of the data right now, and it's true, it's, there's no changes in the DUIs, in the amount of possible infractions that are out there, with the exception of obviously, you know, we do have the black market issue, and, but we're always going to have that, regardless. So what I want to do is I want to make a motion, ordinance 2018-45, 2018-1046, 2018-1047, and 2018-1048.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, can we have the roll call vote, please?
We have one clarification, sorry to interrupt. So the, we can talk about it separately, but the annual review wasn't included, and then...
And then give you the flexibility to work with them.
Correct on that, so you can do that separately, take those four ordinances first, and then have the conversation. Just want to make sure we were clear on that.
But does the annual review make reference to adult-use cannabis?
No, it's just the DA for Case Manufacturing.
That's the way I, that is the way I understood it.
Correct, so we've got four, so the first ordinance, per the motion, first ordinance clarifies the pilot program, ordinance to amend for adult use. Second one is only ordinance, it does the same thing, and then it's the DAs for each of those three entities, so that...
Which would be items one, two, three, and four.
Correct.
A, B, C, and D.
Or, yeah.
Yep. But I just need clarification on the other, the other item.
So, and the motion was for...
The first four.
The first four. Okay. And a second.
So can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRosa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
No.
Councilmember Rhino.
No.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes three, two.
Okay, I'll make a motion to conduct a development agreement annual review of Case Manufacturing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRosa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
No.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes four, one.
And then the last piece of that, as Mr. Reynolds indicated, the Case Journey Development Agreement, as we recall, the floor of that agreement is a $40,000 per month, up to a maximum of $100,000 per month. As his business is just getting up and running as a dispensary, he's asking for some flexibility as the first month of operation has been much slower than they expected. So as an effective, without a tax rate in place, the effective tax rate with that floor is, you know, a little higher than he expected. So as he indicated, we request, just the timing of this didn't quite get in front of the development agreements getting amended, we'd ask council to give staff some direction, or at least some flexibility over the next four to six months to work with Mr. Reynolds to come up with a little more flexible payment schedule on the lower end of that as his business gets up and running. So look for council direction to allow, you know, have some flexibility to work out an arrangement and bring that back to council.
I'd agree with that, absolutely. Give them whatever flexibility they need.
So do you need to make a motion, then? Or do you just...
Tom, need to make a motion on that?
I'm charged.
To allow this Toby and the staff to be able to work through the kinks.
Yes.
With Case's Journey or Case Manufacturing?
This is Case's Journey, this is the dispensary. Manufacturing facility, per approved and per agreement, is perfectly fine, there's no issue there. This is, this is the dispensary piece of Case's Journey.
I move to allow staff to take the time and to work through, I guess, a better payment plan until he's up and running.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRosa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
No, excuse me, no.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes four, one.
Okay, we'll move on to item number 16, public hearing to consider resolution number 2018-049, approving the following actions. One, certification of an environmental impact report, SCH number 2017052063. Two, adoption of the findings of facts and statements of overriding considerations. And three, adoption of the 2035 general plan update with suggested revisions. And four, acceptance of the general plan update financing strategy. Mr. Westbrook?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, a very exciting day, as Councilman DeRosa would probably like to say, we're at the goal line of the general plan update process. Two and a half years ago, in November of 2015, we started this process with visioning and kind of got it kicked off. Today is the culmination of that two and a half years' worth of work, a number of folks have had their hand on that. The planning commission at their meeting on April 30th recommended that the city council certify the EIR and adopt the general plan. Two things in the recommendation that the council made that I wanted to make you aware of, because you'll have that same discussion tonight. One, the classification of Faith Home Road, the existing general plan classifies that as an expressway, and it is a six-lane facility. The planning commission elected to downgrade that classification to a four-lane facility, so that was part of their recommendation to the city council. The second part of their recommendation, you may recall, there were some light industrial property that was designated at Roding and McGee Roads. The planning commission elected to take that back to the former designation of low-density residential. So their recommendation to you showed that property being low-density residential, in addition to the Faith Home Road classification at four lanes. So before I get started with Catherine Pan of Diet and Bodia, she's got a PowerPoint to go through, did want to let you know that this evening, we did leave an email note for you on the dais. This was actually, came in from Michael and Patricia Cousins, late last week, we emailed it to the council as soon as we got it. In short, their correspondence really suggests kind of leaving Faith Home Road alone, keeping it a two-lane facility, and they were also objecting to any type of light industrial designation at Roding and McGee. So with that, I'm going to introduce Catherine Pan of Diet and Bodia. She will go through a PowerPoint, and then we'll have questions.
All right, good evening, I'm Catherine Pan, I'm an associate at Diet and Bodia Urban and Regional Planners. I've been working with the city on this project for the past few years, and so I'm pleased to be here tonight to give you this presentation on the draft general plan and EIR. All right, so the purpose of this presentation today is to just give an overview of the process where we are so far, and also to give you a summary of some of the documents that you're considering tonight. So we'll touch on, I wish I could fix this view, so we'll touch on the planning process, the public participation program that we followed, the draft general plan, the draft EIR, the environmental review process, the financing strategy, the findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations, and I'll give you some time to consider the policy question on Faith Home Road, as well as the recommendations from planning commission, before moving on to your questions, public comments, and also your discussion on this Perfect, so just to go back over the planning process, we started this process back in fall of 2015. We started with a visioning and issues identification phase, as well as a background studies phase. And during that time, we held some workshops, some stakeholder interviews, to get an idea of what the community's interests were and what their vision was, and also did some intense research into the background of the city, so that we could come up with a current conditions of the city, the existing conditions report. So we took that information and developed three land use alternatives, which we evaluated based on population, transportation, utilities, and fiscal impacts, and after the community and the planning commission weighed in on those, the city council gave us some direction on a preferred alternative, which we then took to create the draft general plan. That was released back in October 2017, so just last year. We spent this past winter doing the environmental review on that, which brings us to the review and adoption phase, which we are in right now. So we'll touch on the public participation program. It was very important to the city that we incorporate public feedback into the process, and so we looked into a couple of different methods to keep the community informed, and also to get their feedback at critical moments. So in order to keep the community on top of the project, we had a project website. So there, we posted news, we posted meeting notices, and also any products that we completed. All the documents are located in the library there for people to review. We also drafted a number of newsletters that went out by mail and also by email, and also had some updates with the planning council and commission, planning commission and city council at some joint study session. So to get community input, we had a number of activities and events, so these included some stakeholder interviews and workshops at the beginning of the process. The city staff went out and gave some presentations, a roadshow at some various community organizations, and those all went into our development of the visioning, the community vision and guiding principles. We also had some more workshops to go over the alternatives with the community. Staff was at the Ceres Street Fair, and then we also recently had an open house in March for people to come and give their feedback on the draft general plan and the draft EIR. So the draft general plan, this was completed and published in October of 2017. So at that time, we had a more detailed study session with the planning commission and city council, and then we also had, the community had an opportunity to give feedback on that over the past few months, including at the open house in March. As we've gone over before, the draft general plan, this is like a constitution for local development. It provides policies on the topics of land use, conservation, open space, circulation, noise, safety, and environmental justice as part of state law, and it also has some optional elements such as economic development and, I think, recreation. This document expresses a community vision and guiding principles for the year 2035, and it outlines some goals, policies, and implementation actions to help the city achieve So this document includes six elements, we've got the land use and community design element, transportation and circulation, agriculture and natural resources, health and safety, public facilities and services, and economic and community development. And there's also a chapter at the end in the appendix that includes a matrix for implementation. Just a reminder, the housing element is not included in this update, because that is on its own separate schedule based on state law. There here is the current draft of the land use map. This is a little different than it was when you saw it last time, it includes a few revisions that came out of your October 30th meeting, as well as the change that Tom mentioned earlier, the industrial site at Roding Road and McGee has been replaced by its original designation of low-density residential. So also in front of you, you have a list of some recommended changes to the draft EIR, or the draft general plan. So these include some minor corrections throughout the document, as well as some additional policies that we developed during the EIR process to address certain environmental impacts. We also have some revisions based on the review of the draft general plan that the consultants did for their financing strategy, and then also some of the concerns that were identified during the EIR review process, we made some changes to address those as So the draft general plan financing strategy, this was a task undertaken by EPS, they're our subconsultants for economics. It summarizes the types of infrastructure investment identified during the general plan update. So these include utilities, wastewater, stormwater, water supply, et cetera, transportation, and also some improvements to public, the public realm, public spaces. So it also gives some preliminary cost estimates for those types of improvements. It gives us an overall financing framework, as well as some potential mechanisms with which to fund those improvements. And it also goes through the general plan and lists some of the policies that are related to public improvements, and gives us some actions to help us implement those policies. All right, so this is an overview of the environmental review process that we followed. This is based on the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. So we put out our notice of preparation of the EIR back in May, and during that time, we had a scoping meeting with the planning commission to get some public comments on issues that people were interested in us assessing as part of the EIR. So based on that, and also on some comments that we received from public agencies, we did an environmental review, we did a bunch of research, and also analysis into potential impacts in a number of areas, and published a draft EIR detailing all of that in February. So after that, there was a 48-day public comment period, in which the EIR was publicly available, and we received a number of comments during that time. The final EIR came out in April, and that addresses all of those comments, anything that came in during the public review period, we responded to, any revisions that necessitated in the final, in the draft EIR, we incorporated those into the final EIR document as well. And so then that leads us now to the public hearing section, and then hopefully certification of the EIR. So the environmental documentation consists of two documents, it's the draft EIR and the final EIR. So the draft EIR is the big one, it's a very detailed assessment of current conditions and also potential impacts, and in about 14 issue areas, so these are listed here. It also assesses some alternatives to the project, including the no-project alternative, which means keeping the current general plan as is, and it also goes into cumulative impacts, growth-inducing impacts, and significant and irreversible environmental changes that might occur as part of the general plan update. The final EIR, as I mentioned, is, it's slightly slimmer, it incorporates the draft EIR by reference, but it also includes all of the comments we received, all of our responses to the comments, and any revisions to the draft EIR that were necessary in order to address the comments. So none of the information added in that final EIR was of a new, identified any new or significant impacts that would have necessitated a recirculation of the draft EIR. So certifying the final EIR, prior to approving the general plan update, the city council has to certify the draft EIR. And in certifying that, it's really stating that the final EIR has been completed in compliance with SEQA. The final EIR was... The final EIR was presented to the City Council, and the City Council reviewed and considered the information contained in the final EIR prior to approving the plan, and that the final EIR reflects the City Council's independent judgment and analysis. So once the draft EIR is certified, we have to follow these two requirements from CEQA. So we have to make written findings for each significant environmental effect identified in the certified EIR, and also make a statement of overriding considerations regarding the specific reasons to support its action, even if there are significant impacts found. So the findings, the findings include significant impacts related to agricultural resources, air quality, hazards and hazardous materials, land use, population and housing, noise, and transportation. And then the statement of overriding considerations accompanies the findings. And so this is really saying that even though we understand that there are significant impacts possible, the benefits of the project allow those impacts to be acceptable. And so the benefits that we identified for the statement include the implementation of the community vision and guiding principles, the facilitation of long-term agricultural preservation in the region, and also promoting a balance of housing services and employment opportunities in the community. Just to touch again on the policy question that Tom brought up earlier. So right now, the draft general plan shows Faith Home Road as a six-lane expressway based on Stan Cog's plans. And so we received a number of comments over the course of the review period from the public stating that they had some concerns about the expansion of the road to that size. So for the EIR, we actually analyzed the circulation system with Faith Home Road as both six-lane and four-lane, so that we would know the impacts of both. And so the difference is that under the six-lane expressway, we found 13 study segments operating at below a deficient level of service. And under the four-lane arterial, there were 15. Given that it's not possible in the long term to keep it as a two-lane road, staff actually recommends changing the classification of Faith Home Road in the general plan to four-lane arterial. And then once again, to go over the Planning Commission's recommendations, at their April 30th meeting, they voted to certify the environmental impact report as-is, adopt the proposed finding of fact and statement of overriding considerations, and adopt the 2035 general plan update, including the recommended revisions, as well as the change of the classification of Faith Home Road to a four-lane arterial, and then also to accept the general plan update financing strategy. Alright, so that's the presentation. Catherine from Farr and Peers, Catherine Tellez, she did our transportation analysis. She and I are here to answer any questions you may have before we move on to public comment.
What's 13 study segments compared to 15 study segments?
Good evening. I'm Catherine Tellez with Farr and Peers. So when we analyzed Faith Home Road Expressway as a six-lane expressway, we found that there were 13 roadway segments throughout the planning area that we are looking at that would operate at a deficient level of service E or F, meaning they were at or over congested. And then when we analyzed Faith Home Road as a four-lane arterial, two additional segments degraded. Those two happened to be on Faith Home Road, which shows that, you know, a four-lane cross-section is an appropriate cross-section for that facility to provide adequate travel flow throughout the city.
So your recommendation's four? I didn't hear that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Councilor Klein?
Well, as it says, you know, we support continued success with agricultural industry. How much farmland would be lost with Faith Home going to a four-lane arterial?
I did the calculations. They're not going to know the answers. Faith Home Road's two-lane roadway today, 40 feet of right-of-way overall width. If you assume it's an arterial that's 100 feet wide through the general plan study area, because as you know, Faith Home Road is many, many miles long and goes well beyond the City of Series' general plan study area. If you just look at the expansion of that to a 100-foot right-of-way as an arterial, it would be about 30 acres total. And that would just be paralleling both sides of the roadway all the way down. If it was an expressway, the number would be higher than that.
And would that ag land need to be mitigated?
No. It's a right-of-way for a road.
Really?
So when you're talking a roadway, if there's an existing right-of-way of 40 feet, and we were going to 100, that would be 50 feet from each side of the roadway, it'd be about 30 feet.
So the idea is for Faith Home Road to be an expressway or a four-lane road to take trucks from Modesto through down Faith Home Road over the overpass to the freeway, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So what road designation is Service Road?
Service Road's an expressway.
So it's a two-lane expressway, truck route?
Service Road is an expressway classification now. As you'll ultimately see with the development of the Service-Mitchell interchange, that will be expanded to a six-lane facility.
How far out? Will it go all the way to Faith Home Road?
I believe it's the classifications even beyond Faith Home Road.
Correct. Ultimate, in the ultimate, yes. But with the construction of the interchange, it would only go to approximately more road in the initial stages. But as development occurred, it would be expanded further than that.
So, and I understand that Faith Home Road, I mean, we're talking, it might not be built in my lifetime, okay? But with that being said, to me, you know, trucks that would go from Beard Industrial across Faith Home, down Faith Home, when they get to Service Road, they would turn onto Service Road because that is a quicker, more efficient checkpoint to get to Highway 99 if they were going north or south. Otherwise, they go over, they would have to continue down Faith Home, go over the overpass, all the way to Keys Road, and then go back sort of, what would you call it, southeast?
They would go back to the east on Keys Road, back to Highway 99, assuming they were going north or south on that facility. They could continue on Faith Home Road to the south and hit Crow's Landing Road and go out to I-5. Depends on where they were headed.
So if we, if we turn around and say we wanted a four-lane, and we approve all this, and I know it goes through the county, city, Modesto, and everything like that, what mitigations could do, could the City of Series do to keep the truck traffic off of Service, to keep the truck traffic down off Mitchell, keep the truck traffic down off Hatch Road? I mean, that's the whole idea behind this.
I guess if the facility's not built and the traffic stays on those roadways as it is today, building the road gives them an avenue not to use Hatch Road, Service Road, and Mitchell Road.
But, you know, and I've had conversations with Mr. Wells about this. You know, if you're coming across the river at Faith Home, and you want to go northbound on 99, there is, in my mind, and even me as a traveling salesman, there's no way that I'm going all the way to Keys Road, back over the overpass, to get northbound 99. So, I mean, that's really all I want to say on Faith Home.
Can I, can I address one of those questions? Because I have a question to staff. So Catherine, just a question for you. When you did the analysis of the traffic, did you look at land uses outside of the City of Series?
The land uses outside of the City of Series were consistent with the Stan Cog projections, as well as the current thinking for the City of Modesto general plan.
Okay. I guess where I was going to go with it is the widening isn't just for truck traffic. It's also the impacts for the projected or the proposed land uses that we have here. So it's not just for the truck traffic, so that's what I wanted. But it's good that we did look at that. Okay. Any other questions on this item before I open it up for the public?
Well, I mean, to go in a different direction, you know, south of Highway 99 and Service Road, it looks like we have put into our general plan that we were looking at commercial. And it looks like on the original map, it's part of the Williamson Act, you know? And the process is how many years to get that out of the Williamson Act?
If somebody's going to protest a Williamson Act contract, it's a 10-year renewal. None of those properties that have those Williamson Act lands are actually in the city limits. But there is a 10-year protest process. But then there's also a way to purchase yourself out of that sooner.
Because I know we've talked in the general plan that we were, you know, the vision is to develop that for commercial sites.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any other questions? Alright, this time I'll open up to the public. Anyone that would like to comment on this item, please come forward.
Dave Pratt, Series. There's already truck traffic on Service between Crow's Landing and Mitchell Road. And so basically, you're only talking about, what, a mile? And there's several truck businesses over in that area anyways that use that. So I really don't... Yeah, in the future, because once you get the bridge across the river, and maybe hopefully by then, maybe they'll do something with Faith Home Bridge to get traffic on the freeway. But that's my opinion on that. But you're only talking about a mile, extra traffic, truck traffic at that.
Scott Segal, Superintendent, Series Unified School District. And good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Wells, and the rest of the city staff. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm here to address the portion of the general plan that is directly north and adjacent to the Berry Hill campus, which houses over 500 students for the Whitmore Charter School. And I know this has been an area, there's been some back and forth on. I want to make sure that the school district's position is very clear, and I think it is. The district position is that this should be a residential area adjacent to the school. It should not be light industrial. And that is due to the health and welfare impacts that a light industrial usage on those lots directly adjacent to our playgrounds would have. I appreciate the actions of the Planning Commission in changing it back to, I believe, the residential use. And I want to thank you in advance for consideration of the version, I think that's before you, that has it as residential use in question. And thank you for the opportunity. Also, thank you for the support with the SRO.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Superintendent, D. Martini. My name is Ray Diaz. I'm a property owner in the Series rural area. I've addressed the Planning Commission before on this subject. I'd like to reiterate a few of the points here tonight. One of the points I brought up previously with the Planning Commission was regarding the green belt that's discussed within the EIR. It's a bit vague. There's no identification of where it will be. My suggestion is it should be at the outer boundary of the sphere of influence, which is Washington Road, I believe. I was told that that's a policy decision that the Council will take up at the appropriate time. I'm a little bit confused. I know there's, within the EIR, there's policy items included, and there's non-policy items that are excluded, so I'm not sure how that works. I just wanted to let you know if I believe how, where I believe it should be, when it is addressed. Regarding Faith Home Road, the property I have is on Faith Home Road, and I do not concur with the conclusion that it should be an expressway. The conclusion that you just saw on the PowerPoint presentation was that to remain a two-lane road is not feasible. However, I didn't see any analysis on that. I only heard analysis on four lanes or six lanes. I do believe, knowing that the Stan Cog is the lead agency on this, and that Series is, will work with them, I would ask that the Series involvement would be to make sure that all available alternatives are properly assessed before any decision is made on Faith Home Road widening, and not just make it a, it's going to be a four-lane and slam dunk and close the book on it. I think that's important, because when you're talking about mitigating ag land, the actual ag land amount may not be huge, but at one time accounted, I think it was up to like 60 residents that's going to be impacted by going all the way to Highway 99. So it's just not ag land, it's impact to the residents along the Faith Home Road as well, too. I think that's an important thing not to miss. And lastly, I would also wish to comment on the parcel that was under contention on Roding Road by McGee that was redesignated back to be a low-density housing by the Planning Commission. That was a very wise move. The impact for the school district, as the previous speaker has mentioned, would be substantial. And while their measurement is to a quarter-mile away from the potential parcel that we're talking about, we know that noise and air pollution doesn't stop at the boundary. And while it may be diminished a bit, it'll continue on and could affect more schools than just the closest ones. So it's important that that parcel remain a low-density housing area. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Patricia Cousins, 3865 Roding Road. Here again to reiterate what I've said before. I do appreciate the many opportunities in the last two and a half years. And I've been to not all the meetings, but most of them have expressed my opinion. There, I really have nothing new to add, only to say that what Superintendent Segal said about the impact on the school is certainly a position I agree with. It's far more than just the impact, the negative impact on the school that the industrial change would have caused. And I thank the Planning Commission and anticipate that the low-density residential will be maintained, and that there will not be another opportunity to en-run this decision. As to Faith Home itself, four lanes is certainly better than six, but two is better than four. What I remember from the earliest meetings here when the EIR was being contemplated, is everyone wanted to protect agriculture. Everyone talked about the importance of agriculture. They talked about the seal of the City of Series showing not freeways, but the cornucopia and the wealth of produce that our farms can produce, but not if they've been paved over. That's my position. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the council on this item? Okay. I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and direction.
Well, I would really like to make a comment. I'd like to thank the staff and consultants for their hard work in putting the document together. There was a lot of work coordinating, compiling, planning, scheduling, and getting this final document. You know, after reading comments from the Planning Commission, there was good questions asked, and with me, I'm having some main concerns. But the main concern I have for me is Faith Home Road. But, you know, with the changes and the stuff and the conversations with staff, you know, I do want to comment on the consultants and staff on a great job they've done. And it's exciting for me to be a part of it and see the vision. I know that a lot of these things won't be implemented, you know, while I'm on the City Council, but it is exciting to be a part of it. So thank you.
Councilor Lane?
I would agree, Mike. Staff has done an excellent job. I want to bring back, I think on the Faith Home, I would assume that, you know, two lanes with build-out wouldn't handle. I would assume that would be the assumptions that you're kind of making.
That's correct. If it was two lanes...
If it was two lanes based on the land use assumptions that are within the traffic forecast, it would then, it would be very congested, and it would also cause traffic to divert to other parallel roadways. So we'd see much higher levels of traffic on Mitchell Road, even Crow's Landing and Carpenter as traffic sort of diverts to get through the city.
Hey, thank you. You answered that question. Going back to Roading and the corner of Roading and McGee, I went out and took a look at that myself, and school district and residents, Patricia, you guys are absolutely right. It's not a good area for a truck terminal. Certainly, I'm glad that's kind of been pulled out. I'd like to see it possibly that, you know, looking at it out there from, from the south, analyzing what you got to the school, then at the east, you got the church, the north, you got some industrial, light industrial out there. That, to me, seems like a good area. And, you know, and I bring this up because I don't know if you've ever been in a room and you're, I know we've been in these chambers, and it's happened, to where we're going to put some high density in regular residential area. It tends to not go over very well. And I kind of look at that area out there, looking at, you know, possibly giving it some room for some high density out there, too. Residential, I don't know that, I hadn't talked to school about this, or if they'd be objected to something like that at all. Again, it's residential, but give them a little more use of it. And I know they could always come back and do this at a later time, but I'd like the council to consider some high-density residential there. With that, that's, with that, I would say, though, the rest of the plan, the other 14,000 acres that were in this plan, less the seven, heck of a job. Thank you, all staff. I know, Tom, you were excited to get going on this, and it's been a heck of an undertaking. And Margie, thank you for coming on board with us, too, and being a big help, too, I know. And along with the consultants, again, staff just did an excellent job, and I think it's something that we can all be proud of. So with that said, I'd just like some consideration on that one piece of property.
Councilmember Dorset?
Yeah, going back to the Faith Home Road, you know, I was on STANCOG before Vice Mayor Klein was, and I still couldn't figure out why they were doing 132 and going through Dakota. And, you know, all, why that was the fit that was needed. And again, you kind of answered that in regards to, you know, as the time goes on, there's not going to be enough space there. You know, as far as the Roading and McGee, I would have no problem making that high-density on top of. I'd like to thank the staff, use a sports analogy, it's great teamwork. I mean, two and a half years is a long time to go through this process. I know we had pretty good working relationships with the planning commission. And, you know, from citizens to business owners to just any individual that had input to this, I'd like to say thank you. So, great, great project. Almost, almost home, right, Tom? And I'd like to thank you as well, Tom. Thanks.
Councilmember Rhino?
As I initially said, I was not for the industrial at Roading and McGee, because if you go out and you drive it, it just wouldn't make sense. And with Councilmember Lane's suggestion that we look at high-density, I'm visualizing again what that whole area looks like, and I don't see that. I still believe it should be low-density residential, not high-density. As far as Faith Home Road, I know the people that live out there may not be happy with a four lane, but it certainly is better than a six lane. And I think we all have to look towards the future, and it has to be wider than two lanes.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to echo the comments of my colleagues up here. This is a wonderful job done by staff and the consultants, because as we sit here and go through this, I'm really only hearing two issues in a document that's four inches thick. That's pretty tremendous. I'm involved in a lot of general plans up and down the state, and to only have two hot-button issues says a lot for the public outreach that we did, listening to the citizens and wrapping this all up. I will take a moment to kind of address a couple of the items that were the hot buttons, the first one being Faith Home. And I kind of look at it a little bit different than maybe some of the residents do. I kind of see it's a little bit of a win going to four lanes, because it's currently six lanes in the general plan, and we've gone down to at least four, and that was done in 1997. So we're talking 21 years ago, we thought we were going to go to six lanes, and we haven't even got off of two. Could it be another 20 years before we get to four? Yeah, probably pretty easily could be another 20 years before we get to four, because if you look at the dynamics of cost of infrastructure, I mean, that's a very, very costly infrastructure that I don't see too many people waving the flag to go and build. I mean, and there's a massive bridge that needs to be built, and environmental that goes along with that. I would never advocate for someone to challenge something, but if you want to delay a process, you know, that's how you can go ahead and do it. And the city of Seres isn't driving the bus on the whole Faith Home widening. I mean, it's not going to do us any good if we have just little portions of it that would be four lane. You need to do the whole thing. And so that's a bigger undertaking than I think people understand. So from that, again, I see it as a win. It's something that we have to plan for. It's not saying that we're going to be building it today or tomorrow, or even in my lifetime, but it's something that we have to, you know, at least properly plan for, which is what I think they did in 1997, when they thought they needed six lanes and at least we're going to four. As far as the Faith, or excuse me, the Roading property, I know there's been some discussions back and forth, but, you know, I can support it being back at residential. It probably is, makes for good use in that area. You know, at this time, I'm really pleased with what you guys have put together and where we are with it. And, you know, at this point, I don't have any other comments. I just think it's been a long time in coming, and it's a big hurdle to get done.
So changing it, Chris, I don't know how you feel about that, but I...
Well, I guess my comment would be, have we, have we studied high-density in the EIR? So can we make that change without that analysis?
We have not studied it as high-density. We have talked to legal about that potential. There is some risk associated with that, making that change. However, the council could make findings that there is some consistency there, but would be a little bit of a stretch. The safer route is to leave it as the low-density residential.
But that doesn't preclude them from coming back at a later date and requesting?
Correct. And it may be better for council to kind of consider that piece first, you know, kind of separate that off, make a determination on that piece of what you'd like to do as a council, and then consider the full general plan and recommendation, just as a suggestion, to separate those two issues out, to not muddle the full general plan.
Yeah, I would want to do that. Not over seven acres. But I would like to, you know, clarity whether or not we can do it now, or, you know, I mean, I would support it. And Councilman Dorset said he would support it, but if there's not enough support here, obviously, it's...
Well, are you...
Yeah, I would, yeah, I'd make a motion that we change it.
So, just so I'm hearing...
Just on this one?
Correct. I'm sorry, just so I'm hearing you correctly. If the request is to go to high-density...
Correct.
Then there needs to be direction on that.
Yeah, the current staff recommendation, what's included in the draft general plan is low-density residential.
Right.
So to make a change, to change that implementation, you would, we'd recommend you make some, I mean, you could do it all at once, but we think it'd be more practical to make that as a separate, and then make a decision on the full general plan.
Okay.
So I would make a recommendation that it would go to high-density.
Okay.
By this one.
That second?
Okay, before we get there, Tom, I have a question for you. I believe we've received a letter from legal counsel associated with the property owner that wants the request?
Yes, we have.
Okay. I have to disclose that that legal counsel is a client of mine, so as a result of that, I think I would probably have to abstain from this discussion. Due to potential conflict?
I'd agree.
Okay. So can I just step back from this, or do I have to leave the room? Probably leave the room.
Open the door. Okay.
So my, now my, now my question is for legal counsel, because we're taking this separate, okay, and yet we have a motion and a second on the floor, do we need to open it up for public comment? Because it is separate from what's on here.
You've had the, it's your call. You've had discussion on it, but if you want, with the new motion, you could ask for additional comment.
Is everybody, at this time, I'd like to open it up for the public. For comment on the one motion that's on the table, please come up and address the council.
Ray Diaz, again, I'll take that opportunity. Thank you. I think if you look at the infrastructure in the area, as you've driven it, it would be very questionable if it would support high-density. You know, I mean, Roading Road in that area is marginally maintained, and with high-density in there, we put an awful lot of load on the roadway, and I don't know about the sewer system in there, that it would have to be significantly developed, as well as any crossing over the canal in that area. So I think the infrastructure would require significant work on that, and I think there would be, it would behoove the council to do some serious analysis before you take a vote to change that particular low-density designation to a high-density. Thank you.
Do I see anybody else? With that, I'll close public comment, bring it back. Can I have the roll call vote, please?
Ms. Cousins.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'll reopen it for you, Ms. Cousins.
Getting up slowly. I wanted to, again, say that what Ray says is what I believe in, too. And when the planning commission two weeks ago discussed all this, there was no mention whatsoever of the high-density. And I realize that anybody can en-run it anytime. To me, it's just another version of, well, gee, we'll have the truck stop after all. We changed our minds, we'll take it back. Changing from low-density to high-density seems like another version of the same thing. Think about it for a while. Consider it. Do traffic studies. High-density would enormously, I assume, increase vehicle miles. Without those studies, how can you know?
Dave Pratt, Seres, I think the same thing. That part of it should be taken off the table. If you decide, make it from low-density to high-density, and just vote on the rest of it. Separate that part of it off of this for right now. If originally it was low-density, and you're in the midst of trying to change that to something else, it needs to be taken off. Thank you.
Okay, I see no more, nobody else, so I'll close the public comment and bring it back for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Dorset?
Yes.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
No.
And Vice Mayor Klein?
No. So we have two to two, so...
Doesn't pass.
Doesn't matter, so we'll just, we'll just leave it in the general plan as it currently stands, as low-density?
Yes, correct. Without action, then it stays with the staff recommendation.
I guess we'll go out and get the, there. Thank you. So now that we'll bring the mayor up to speed of what the, I'll go ahead and let you, Mr. Wells.
Yes, so it was a deadlock at two to two, so no action was taken on that land use change, so for your...
So it stays at low-density?
The staff recommendation, so nothing was changed. The staff recommendation is still on the table. We would look for council action on the overall items that are before you as presented. So that would be that property is low-density residential, and the Faith Home roadway is a four-lane arterial facility.
Well, we didn't vote on Faith Home Road, we just did the...
I'm just telling you what the staff...
Okay, 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 okay.
How you change, what you do next...
I thought you were sneaking something in on this.
No, 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 I'm just telling you what the staff recommendation is to reiterate that, you know, the, those are the only, the only thing that was considered was that particular item, so there was no action taken.
Okay.
To change that land use on that particular parcel.
And the four actions you need to take are all contained in Resolution 2018-47.
Forty-nine?
Forty-nine.
How about forty-nine?
Yes.
Okay, is there any other discussion on this subject before we take action? Okay, I'll look for direction. Well, if I, if I make a motion, okay, nobody's going to like it. I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-049, but I oppose Faith Home Road. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote?
Can we, I'm sorry, can we clarify what opposition to Faith Home Road means?
I oppose Faith Home Road going to a four-lane or a six-lane. I want to keep it. You want to turn it, change it to two-lane from six? It's two-lane right now, I want to keep it two-lane. No, it's six-lane right now. Well, the document says four. Okay, so I want to keep it a two-lane.
Yeah, the existing general plan is a six-lane expressway.
So I want to keep it a two-lane. No, you want to take it from six to two. Okay, there you go. Okay. We have a motion? That's, oh, it's your motion, so sorry. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Okay. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Dorset?
I don't know. How was that answer? I think we're going to have it in near future. No.
Councilmember Lane?
No.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
And Mayor Viera?
No. I told you guys wouldn't like my motion.
Motion fails.
I moved approved Resolution Number 2018-049, as is.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Dorset?
Yes.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes, but I'd like Faith Home Road to remain a two-lane.
Can you do that?
I can make that comment.
It's a comment.
I mean, you know, you know which way it's going.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
And Mayor Viera?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0, and for the record, we'll add Vice Mayor Klein's comment.
And just for the record, they could build six lanes before we took this vote. I understand. And nobody has. I understand. I'm voting my conscience, okay? Okay. And I sort of assumed, and I'll say this out loud, the direction the council was going to go, and with the four-lane, which, you know, is acceptable, but my conscience is, because I don't think you're going to really divert that much truck traffic, so. Okay. All right, councilmember referrals. Is there anyone on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda? Hearing none. Reports, the only thing I have to report is I wanted to congratulate everybody on a nice street fair and hundred-year centennial celebration. I thought it was very well done, and I know none of this stuff happens without a lot of hard work, and it was, it came off very well, so that time, that's all I have. Councilmember Rhino?
Nothing tonight.
Vice Mayor Klein? My comment is, the street fair was fantastic. It was busy. You know, I was on the, on the crew that was sort of moving the trashcans around, and the trashcans were a half-full to three-quarters away full. And I don't know if the answer would be from earlier's comment, if we took the lids off the trashcans, but then you got to worry about all of the other stuff that, that is flying around it. But other than that, the street fair was a success, so. Hey, Councilmember Lane?
No comment.
Councilmember Dorset?
Nothing.
Okay, Ms. Dean? Okay, Ms. Dean? Tom?
Just my neighbors and I say thank you for our refurbished street.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor. Reminder, our centennial committee continues to meet. We have a meeting tomorrow evening at five o'clock here in the community center. The next meeting, just to highlight our budget, draft budget presentation will be at the next meeting on May twenty-ninth. So that will be an exciting meeting. Look forward to that. I want to take the opportunity to thank Tom Westbrook for all his efforts on the general plan. This is a monumental task, and the right guy for the job pulling off something that hasn't been done in a very long time, so a lot of credit to Tom for pulling it together, and obviously the consultant team was fantastic, and the rest of his staff have been amazing. This doesn't happen very often, and, and for most people in the planning field, you know, it's, it's once in a career that you get to update a general plan, and this was one that we can all be proud of, and that's something I am certainly proud of, of our staff of, of pulling this off, so I couldn't miss the opportunity to thank Tom for an outstanding job, and, and again, the community that participated in the whole process. It's been very refreshing, very rewarding, and we look forward to, now the fun, the fun part, implementing it, so, coming soon.
Tom?
Yeah, just wanted to say a lot of memorable moments throughout this two and a half-year process. The one that strikes me the, the best, and I certainly appreciate Lorna Sperez and the Partnership for Healthy Children, but giving a workshop where you're the only one speaking English is a pretty unique thing, and so, you know, it just kind of kind of leads to the fact of the public involvement that we got. And so I did want to say thank you to the council to making that commitment to spend dollars two and a half years ago to get our general plan updated. Need to thank my department heads and some other staff. They spent time reviewing these documents. Probably sometimes not the funnest read in the world, but something that's very necessary as we look to the long-term future of this city. Also wanted to thank the Planning Commission for the job that they did as well. Members of the public, property owners, business owners, stakeholders that we interviewed over a number of years. And then lastly, want to thank Diet and Bodia. So Catherine Pan is our last woman standing for the consulting firm. Sophie Martin and Ella Wise both took positions elsewhere, and then also thank you to Fair and Peers and Catherine Tellas. So excited to get this, this project done. It was a long effort. I'm glad that we're done, and now we can start the implementation.
Okay. Daryl?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to note that the construction at Mitchell and Service is commencing. We're going to delay the, the largest part of that work until about July, when the kids are out of school, and lessen the impact on that circulation there, but a lot of construction coming there next to the potential Walmart site, and we'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Brent? Uh, is Patina, I don't see her. Rich?
Thank you. Just wanted to let everybody know the success that the Series Fire Association had at their booth at the street fair. Obviously, it was a good event this year because it was their highest grossing year as far as their proceeds go on their sales, so they're pretty proud of all the participation from the community. And everybody should know that the hundred percent of their proceeds go right back towards kids programs, soccer clubs, FFA programs, things like that, so congratulations to them. Also, this week, or next week, starting on Tuesday, Fire Station Three, Service Road, will be hosting a car seat installation course. It's the fourth one we've hosted with the Save Kids Organization and staff from Doctor's Hospital. So it's a four-day class commencing on Friday, and there'll be another large, basically, it's a drive-through event where citizens can drive in and they get educated on how to install a car seat safely, so. To my knowledge, Series Fire is the only fire agency in the county that has certified and qualified installers, so we're up to now five personnel that can provide that service, so we're pretty proud of that fact. Uh, and then lastly, I want to just publicly thank two of our employees who've resigned recently. We've had two fire engineers who've resigned to go seek employment elsewhere to further their careers, but together they had a little over twenty years of experience that they've dedicated to Series and the community, and I just want to thank John McManus and David Steenberg for the, the service that they provided while over here. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor DiMartini? Nothing? Okay. I don't think I missed anybody with that. With that, we will move to closed session. We have conference with labor negotiator. And then I'm not sure that we'll have anything to report out from that, and from that, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, May twenty-ninth because of Labor Day, so, or excuse me, Memorial Day, so just remember that. Thank you.